The United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God and universal with liberty and justice for all.
Wendy, could you take a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Rob Toyer.
Here.
Debra Nelson.
Here.
Michelle Blythe.
Here.
Yvonne Giardot Van Ornum.
Here.
Lisa Noback.
Here.
Jen Schwede.
Present.
Heather Logan.
Mr. President.
Mayor Vanny, I move for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll start our meeting. We have special guests with presentation. We've got the audit team here to give us the entrance conference for the state audit. I think I see them up there on the screen. Welcome, welcome. Can you guys hear us? There you go.
Yeah, yeah, perfect. Yeah, well, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen if I can. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes, all right. Well, also with some introductions, my name is Courtney Anderson. I am the audit manager for the ever team that is the pleasure of working with your staff to conduct the audit. And with me today is Deb Keating, and she is your audit meeting this year. And so we have provided a packet of information for you. You don't need to have that out. We're not going to go through it page by page. We'll refer to it from time to time. But that mainly is meant for your takeaway if you have any questions after our presentation today. It's nice just to help provide that reminder of what we spoke about today. So just to get started, you know, why are we here in the first place? Well, we, as an independent agency, Washington State, we have the task of auditing all state local funds, how those funds are being used. And so we specialize in a wide variety of audits, as you can see on screen, that can reach from anything from performance audits to citizen hotlines, whistleblowers, broad investigations. There's a lot of things that we can take a look at and do so from time to time. But the three areas that we want to focus on tonight, as it impacts the city, more specifically, are those three areas that are highlighted at the very top, and that is your accountability, financial statement, and federal compliance audits. So just to give you a very brief summary of what those types of audits are, these are the types of audits that we conduct pretty much every year on the city. So this is not new for the city, especially your accountability audit, which is taking a look at any laws, regulations, contracts, agreements, policies, or procedures, or anything that you are responsible for being compliant with. We take a look at it to make sure that they are, and that you have procedures in place to make sure that you are compliant with those items. But then the other area that we look at every year is your financial statement audit. And the goal of this audit is really to examine as to whether or not your financial statements can be relied upon. But then lastly is your federal compliance audit. And this is the one audit that may fluctuate from the earlier depending on how the federal funds are being spent. More recently, this has been a regular audit, just because of all that, it will be something that has been out in the world the last five years or so, starting to slowly dwindle down. But that is still very much an area that we're looking at this year. So similar to a financial statement audit, the goal of a federal compliance audit is to issue an opinion as to whether or not the city complied with the grant requirements specific to the federal funds that the city received and utilized. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Deb, and she's gonna speak more specifically about the areas that we're looking to look a bit further.
All right, thank you so much, Courtney. So like Courtney said, we will conduct an accountability audit, and it will come in January 1st, 2023, December 31st, 2024. So for this audit, we utilize a risk-based approach in selecting areas for further review. So as part of this process, we completed a number of audit planning procedures. We conduct risk assessments with key members of the city. We review minutes of the governing body. We conduct analytical procedures, and we review results of our audits. We also assess areas of common risk for cities across the state. So while we're still completing these audit planning procedures, we have identified several preliminary areas for inclusion in our audit this year. So we will be reviewing the financial condition of the city for any indications of financial distress. We will go to open public meetings, just to make sure that the city is compliant with minutes, meetings, and executive session requirements. And once we complete the accountability planning, we will identify the remaining areas that we will review.
Just to give a little bit of clarification, just given the timing of this audit with the change in the financial position, we didn't expedite focusing mainly on financial statement and federal compliance. And so that's why we haven't quite finished our accountability planning, because we just wanted to utilize Kristen while she was still with the city. So once we have completed those planning procedures, we will send you a follow-up email with updated packets that lets you know more specifically the additional areas that we've selected. So we can anticipate that.
All right, so we're performing a financial statement audit that covers the 2024 fiscal year from January 1st to December 31st. So like Courtney said, the purpose of a financial statement audit is to issue an opinion on whether or not the financial statements are free of material misstatements and are presented. So this audit is conducted in accordance with government audit standards, which also requires us to gain an understanding of the city's internal controls and process over the preparation of the financial statements. If we do uncover any instances of material noncompliance, we will notify the city accordingly. At the end of our engagement, we will issue a financial statement on report to the city in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting. So this report will detail the opinion being issued, the results of our consideration of the city's internal controls and complaints, as well as a full set of the audited financial statements. So like Courtney said, because we were able to expedite both the financial and federal portion of the audit because of the key position changes, we are currently actually close to completion of the financial statement audit. We're trying to get Kristen, as much Kristen involved as we basically need to have her answer any questions that popped up before she left. So close to being finished on that one already. And let's see. So we also conducted a federal grant compliance or single audit for the period from January 1st, 2024 through December 31st of 2024. So again, the objective of this audit is to determine whether the city has materially complied with requirements of receiving federal funding. So when we complete this audit, we'll issue an opinion on the city's compliance with those federal grant requirements. An unmodified opinion is what you want to receive and provides assurance that the funds were expended in accordance with their intended purpose, and all requirements have been largely followed. These results will be published and combined report with the financial statement audit. And it's important to note that our audits are conducted in accordance with uniform guidance. So these standards also require that we gain an understanding of the city's internal controls that go through to ensure that the federal requirements are being followed. Next slide, please. So in conducting our federal grant compliance audits, we select enough audit standards to satisfy coverage requirements set by those federal guidelines. For example, 20% for lower risk, 40% for higher risk is the minimum that we have to select. So in assessing this requirement, we identify the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds grant for inclusion in our audit this year. So this program alone represents approximately 74% of the total federal expenditures for 2024. And normally, at this point, we would tell you that, you know, during this audit, we would identify any concern with that process. We would absolutely let you know. But again, as mentioned earlier, we did a head start of auditing this group, and the work is actually completed. It's in final review right now. We haven't noted any major issues, but again, it's in final review already. So that was a fast step. So throughout the audit, it's important to keep the lines of communication open and flowing both ways. And there's a few ways that we accomplish that. So the first at the pre-audit meeting, we have an engagement letter. We provide an engagement letter that confirms both management and auditor responsibilities and other limitations. So additionally, that letter identifies the cost of the audit, the estimated timeline for completion, and expected communications. We perform those risk assessments that I mentioned earlier. We have weekly status meetings with our audit liaison, formerly Kristen, now will be Sherry. And we have a management representation letter. So these representations are important. They ensure that our audit is considered all information and that no information was withheld from the staff to your knowledge. And then finally, we have an exit conference. So we are committed to ensure that you have the opportunity to hear directly from us on the results of your audit. We'll work with management to schedule an exit conference meeting and invite the entire governing body members to attend on that final report. And lastly, so throughout the course of the audit, we need time to recommendations that are necessary to bring to your attention. So our office has three primary levels of audit recommendations that we use to identify significance of audit issues identified. So first, audit findings constitute the most significant level of audit recommendation that can be issued. Audit findings are the only authority that are included in their entirety in our audit report. So in addition, if a finding is issued, the city will be given an opportunity to provide a response to that finding, and that also will be published in our report. So it's important that local readers not only understand the issue that was found, but also any information that the city wishes to share on how the issue itself occurred or its planned course of correction going forward. So please note that certain external standards may require audit issues to be reported as audit findings. So these standards are commonly encountered in a financial and federal audit engagements. So next step, management letters raise our audit recommendation that are less significant than an audit finding, but still important enough to bring to the attention of the governing body and management in a formal letter. While management letters are not published in their entirety in our audit reports, they are referenced and still constitute a public document. In addition, it's important to address management letters, as if they go unresolved, they could be elevated to a recording level to audit finding in future engagements. And lastly, we have exit items, which constitute our lowest level of recommendations. Exit items are very normal in the audit process and are often the two housekeeping items. They're often addressed best practices or minor noncompliance matters. We will provide a full list of the exit items identified to management for their consideration at the end of our engagement. Now with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Courtney.
All right, so just a couple of additional reminders. First is if there is any confidential information that is being provided to our office throughout the duration of the audit, number one, we ask that it only be provided if it's absolutely necessary. But number two is provided to make sure that we are made aware of that, so that we can take the steps necessary to make sure that that information is secure, as that is very important. As Deb mentioned, the engagement letter, but also in your packet, I believe it's on page two, we have included the cost of the audit for reference. We always hope throughout the duration of the audit that we can answer any questions that you might have, that we can all come to the same conclusion on any thing that may come up. But should it be needed, there is an audit dispute process that is available, and we're not able to address any of those items amongst the audit team who go on here. And then one reminder, the state audit does require any potential known or suspected loss to be reported to our office in the title of the letter. Should that be brought to your attention, you can go on our website, there is a form to fill out, and then our audit team will be in touch if there's any further questions or next steps in that process, should it be necessary. And then going along those lines, unfortunately, as I believe everybody is aware of, there has been a significant increase in cybersecurity issues and potential frauds or misinformation in that manner. And so with that, there are some new requirements, maybe not new, but there are some additional requirements we want to just make sure that you are aware of. The first one being that if there is an incident that impacts more than 500 Washington State residents, that is also required to be reported to the general's office. Reporting may also be required to our office regardless of the number of residents that it impacts. That's really necessary if it involves financial records or finances. And so again, in your packet, as well as on our website, there is additional information for you to take a look at, just to be aware of, or if somebody comes to your attention, there is additional information there. You are always welcome to reach out to us if you are uncertain what those next steps may be. And then one question that we often ask here, we often assume office auditor, similarly to you, we also receive our own audits. Every three years, we have auditors from all across the country. They come out and audit through the National State Auditors Association. So they come and visit our office down in Olympia. They spend about two weeks digging through all of the work that you've done to make sure that we are compliant with all of the audit standards that we are required to adhere to. We jump go in all of the two weeks and more that they spend, we get about a two-page document that gives us the rating of a pass, a pass or fail audit. If you are interested in taking a look at that, there is a link to it on our website. You are welcome to take a look at our most recent audit meeting, another one coming up in September. So it's really the information that is available for you, if you would like it. And then we always like to make you aware of additional resources that are available to you throughout the year, whether or not we are on site for an audit or not. The first one is our local government support team. They are the ones that are tasked with maintaining the VAR's manual and the online filing system, which is utilized by the city throughout the year to upload the financial statements, making sure that they are compliant with all of those requirements, that is all through that process. They also provide a variety of different training, accounting, and reporting trainings. Their goal is to really make the audit submission and reporting process as easy as they possibly can for you. So we do encourage you to utilize those trainings and those resources, because that team really just wants to help make it really smoothly for you. And then another way to help answer those questions is for a help test. You can submit a help test question for any question that you might have, whether that be for your financial statement, reporting, procurement, if you're looking to go out for bid or something. That resource is available, and the most applicable specialists will respond back to you, so you have somebody you can communicate with and ask any follow-up questions, should you have any. So we do encourage you to use that resource. And then finally, the Center for Government Innovation, they are also a tool that is available. They provide a wide variety of tools and resources. Their goal is really to put out as much information as they can, so that should you be interested in, you know, whatever topic you're looking into, their goal is to have that resource already available. A lot of it is best practice resources, from credit cards to procurement to, you name it, they, there's almost a loop of information in the resource library that's available on our website. They are also responsible for maintaining the financial intelligence tool. So as Deb mentioned, financial supervision is an area that we've been looking at across all local governments in Washington State, just with the economy and the changes, you know, ongoing changes that are happening. And so that is really great tool and resource to utilize, just to see how the city is doing. You can also compare yourself or take a look at other local governments if you're interested in them. So along with that, that Center for Government Innovation also provides a variety of other helpful items. They do cyber checkups, just to do a quick check to help hopefully minimize the risk of any cybersecurity incidents. They do need trainings, they do T W workshops, and then I already mentioned the F I T tool. So again, just a lot of resources available, if you're interested in them. So there's information in that packet on our website. You can also reach out to Deb or myself, and we're happy to point you in the right direction as well. So with that, any questions for us today?
Do we have any questions?
No.
None seen, so sounds like you explained it pretty well. Appreciate it.
Thank you all for being with us and having a rest of the evening.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, we will move on to the public comment period. For the members of the public who wish to speak to the council, please limit your remarks to three minutes and state your name and address. I will start with the two that have signed up. First one is Jay Lindberg.
Tonight, I'm gonna just give you all a little bit of information about Gaza, stuff that y'all don't already know, that I thought when I was doing my research, just sort of jumped out at me. The first thing is that your city is what, 15 square miles? Gaza is only 10 times bigger than your city. It's not very big. It's less than 150 square miles. It's, of course, prime coastal Mediterranean real estate. And in the last five years, they found over a half a trillion dollars worth of oil and natural gas underneath Gaza. Now, the people that live in Gaza want to benefit from that oil and natural gas, and the people on the other side of that, they don't want to pay them for it, they want to steal it, and they want to kick them out of their country. That's really, pretty much what this thing is really all about, that there's a population there of about 2 million people, and 70,000 of them are armed and trained. When October 7th went down, the perimeter of Gaza was severely undermanned. They should have had 5,000 to 10,000 troops on the perimeter of Gaza when that happened, because Gaza, the, they only attacked with about 3,000 men. And if you had a couple of thousand men arming the perimeter of their, they would have been able to stop them, and all that slaughter wouldn't have happened. There were an estimated 500 troops on the border of 2 million hostiles with 70,000 armed Palestinians, right on the border. There is no legitimate reason why they had less than 500 troops on that border when October 7th went down. Now, out of that 500 troops, over three-quarters of them were killed. 375 of the 500 troops were killed. When that thing went down, only 40% of the 500 troops were even on duty. So you're looking at a group that's literally tens of thousands of armed insurrectionists, and you've got 200 people on duty to protect that. And when they couldn't protect it and it got overrun, Israel had no idea of how many people came over the border, so they did what's called a, let me get this right, a quarantine and sterilization project. What they said is, we don't know how many, we don't know if it's 2,000, 5,000, 10,000, because there's 70,000 armed troops there.
Jay, that's your three minutes.
Is that it?
Yep, thank you.
I think you know where I'm going with that. They got slaughtered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up to speak, Mark Dolan.
Again, I'm Mark Dolan. I've been a member of this community for 45 years. I was an educator here for 40 years. I've been retired just a few years now. I wasn't really prepared to talk tonight, but my, I thought there was some, signing up was supposed to be done by this morning, so I'm surprised you let me come up for a few moments. I'll be brief. I just want to educate myself to understand a little bit more about what's happening over by where I live. I believe you guys call it the East Hill Project, a development over there. And I live at 9202 Tevet Road, so it definitely impacts me. Matter of fact, when I look at the plans, I'm in phase two, and I have not had anybody ever address those issues with me or asked me, what do you think about selling your property or anything? So I'm just concerned, I did not make it to the meeting, and I did ask questions. I went to and talked to the city planners and got a little bit of information, but I just want to educate myself and help understand you guys in regards to your responsibility. One question you can answer directly, when it comes to the final decision, is it up to the city council to approve that development? Is that correct?
I think all your questions you'd have tonight would probably be best addressed asking Amy out at the CED. She can walk you through all the steps.
I actually tried to visit with her. Is that Amy Rusko?
Yes.
Yeah, I actually attempted to see her last week, and she would not see me.
She's usually pretty good at meeting with people. She might have just been busy that day.
Yeah, she wasn't with me, and I'm a nice guy. But I came in, I had concerns, she didn't have time for me. I did talk to another person, Jen, someone who's a city planner for maybe the last six months. She couldn't answer my questions either.
Best, I think the best opportunity would be at the informational meetings, or Paul, would you like to?
Yeah, please, I just want to know when to ask.
I'll give him my card before he leaves, and I can contact him.
Okay, especially attend the informational meetings, because it's still in the development phase.
And I understand that. Again, I wasn't prepared, but you called on me, so at least I'll be coming back and learning more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, do we have anybody else? Okay.
So my name is Dixie Dolan, and I was not prepared either to come and speak, because we were told we had to sign up by 9 o'clock this morning, but we wanted to find out what's going on. I live at the same place that Mark does. We've lived there for 35 years. Our main concern, and we would like to address to all of you, is not that many years ago, the Tavet Road was shut down because of the slide and sloughing, and it was a major issue. We were told that the Tavet Road was going to be shut down permanently, and that the road would have to go off the old burn road. Now we're being told the old burn road is tentatively going to be closed, and the majority of this traffic for this development will come through the Tavet Road. I would like to ask you as council members to go on the Tavet Road and look at it. It is sloughing again where it wasn't repaired. And the only reason that anything was done was because my dear husband and Jennifer White rallied the troops in the neighborhood. was because my dear husband and Jennifer White rallied the troops in the neighborhood and had people come to a city council meeting, and it was like, oh my gosh, this affects a lot of people. And so you really need to go and check, no matter where it's happening, that that road is safe, because it is not. And one concern we have, and many neighbors have talked to us, there's guardrails on that hill. You can't even see the guardrails right now because the city is not maintaining it. It is not clearing it. But if you go to the bottom of the Tevet Road at 9200, you will see the road is cracking, and it has been filled with the black tar and glue to maintain that. When it was initially found, I had been walking on the road. I came back, I go, Mark, the guardrail posts are hanging off the road. And sure enough, the city came out and looked, two to three feet into the road, there was no ground up above. It's happening down below. You really need to check it out before you try and make the Tevet Road a major thoroughfare for any development in Arlington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
My name is Tom McNeil. I live off of 92nd Avenue Northeast, which is also off the Tweet Loop Road, and I'm here with the same concern about the East Hill subdivision. We did attend the meeting Monday, and unfortunately, we had forgotten about the meeting and arrived right at the end of it. We did talk to Amy just a little bit at the end there about some of the concerns. We went out of curiosity because we heard this huge development was going in, 1,340 houses on the south side of Tweet Road. Well, when we got there and we looked at the map, we were shocked to see that the development now includes, I think, additional phases, but those phases include Vernon Beach's property. Perhaps you all know Vernon Beach, he used to be a council member at one point in time. And that property neighbors our property. We are on the, our property is, on 92nd Avenue, our property is the first property in the county. In other words, the city limit is our property line. And in looking at this development proposal, that area, I know that Vernon wanted to sell his property and wanted to have it developed. It's currently Ag 10, and he had indicated that at some point in time, there might be 10 to 15 homes put in that area. Okay, not great, but we can live with that, you know. The development shows somewhere between 60 and 80 homes now going in that same area. And this is an area, we have a stream that flows on our property year round. It comes out at the base of that property, right on 92nd. And this development shows townhomes going in right along the edge of our property. Amy assured us not to worry because there was a five-foot setback, which, you know, that's not a lot. But we're concerned about that because that whole area feeds the stream. It's a very wet area. It's definitely a wetland. We have property that is about 500 feet to the east of that as well. We own two parcels. We looked into having that developed a couple of years ago, and we found that with the buffers and setbacks, there was only 80 square feet of unencumbered area on that piece of property. We're very sure that the property that Vernon owns is probably the same way. So we have concerns about that. We also have concerns about the road and the condition of the road and whether there will be sloughing or more problems there if they do development in that area because it's right below the road. We also see a lot of wildlife in that area. They use that creek, which does run year round, as a source of water. We've seen, I just found it, my wife just checked, it's my wife that's with me today. She just checked and found that we were concerned about the western red-legged frog. I don't know if you're familiar with frogs at all, I'm kind of a frog guy, okay? But you don't seem as much as you used to. They look like a leopard frog, but they have red legs. And I have seen some on our property, but not very often. And I'm sure that this area is probably one of the last places around here that they reside. And even though they're not...
Sorry, three minutes there.
They're in decline.
But again, it's where I really suggest, really send it in, your public comments and stuff. It'll all get recorded and stuff as the development progresses.
We did write and send in all the comments.
Yeah.
Can I stand to ask from your...
Unfortunately, the public comments, we can't.
Okay. So if the person that you're asking us to go see refused to say Mark, ask him off to another person who didn't know anything.
I'm happy to, I'm the city administrator, and I'm happy to meet with you and discuss this, and I will give each one of you my business card before you leave, so please don't leave without it.
It's difficult to have all this happen and not know what is going to happen.
Okay. Any more, anybody else? None, okay? That will close the public comment period.
Mayor Vanny, I move for approval of the consent agenda as noted.
Second.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion that carries. Okay, we'll start our first item of new business tonight, the airport commission appointments. Let it go.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. Tonight, I'll be talking about the airport commission appointments. Rather, tonight, I'll actually be talking about reappointments. And just to give you background, so the Derry Fink and Kirk Ladue terms on the airport commission expired on April 1st, 2025. The airport commission selection committee consists of Mayor Don Maney, council member Michelle Blythe, airport commissioner Ruth Gonzalez, airport director Marty Ray, and airport operations coordinator Lorraine Robinson conducted interviews for these two positions, and Derry Fink and Kirk Ladue were chosen for reappointments. Brief history, there are several members of the commission. No less than four members must be residents of the Arlington or Snohomish County. Up to three members may reside in King, Skagit, or Island Counties. A majority of the commissioners must have expertise in aviation industries, business administration, or operations financed accounting, to name a few, or other related experiences from industries that have logical nexus with the airport administration, operations, and development. Members are appointed by city council. Each is served a term of three years, and these terms expire April 1st. The commission has authority to construct, enlarge, improve, maintain, equip, operate, regulate airport facilities, but remain as an advisory commission to the city council. Any questions?
Any questions? None seen? Do we have a motion?
I move to appoint Derry Fink and Kirk Ladue to the airport commission for another term. Second.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to our second item, the 2026 lodging tax distribution. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. This is our distribution list for the LTAC, coming from the LTAC Committee. I did receive some questions earlier today about the distributions. I had asked Oscar to speak on how this works because LTAC is a little bit different committee than what we're used to working with, as it's regulated by state statute, not by city ordinance. So let Oscar talk a little bit about it before we move through the discussion.
Yeah, the LTAC rules are not really a model of clarity, and so there's been a lot of discussion amongst folks at MRC for how they should operate. But the bottom line is, for tonight, if the council is good with the LTAC recommendation, it can take the action and adopt those recommendations. The council cannot change those recommendations without giving the LTAC a chance to review those proposed changes over the course of 45 days. And then it can come back to the council, and the council can take the action that it deems to be appropriate. Right there in the statute, it says that the council cannot allocate lodging tax funds to entities that are not recommended by the LTAC, so that is not an available option. But if the council did want to readjust or change the allocations, it could do that if it follows the process that I just outlined, which is essentially sending it back to the LTAC, giving them 45 days to comment, and then subsequently taking final action.
Do we have then any questions? Michelle?
I don't really have a question. I have a concern. I guess every year, we look at this and we look at the numbers and maybe just say, oh, well, it looks good. But really, what stood out to me this year was there was requests in the amount of 250-something thousand dollars, I believe, and we only had 185-ish dollars. And I noticed that the Arlington Fly-In was almost a quarter of that, 23% of the entire dollars. And I just think $40,000 is quite a bit for one organization when we have so many others that are in need, that we could potentially, I'm not making a recommendation here, it's just my opinion, sort it out differently. So for me, that's a lot of money for one organization, and I'm not in agreement or supportive of that.
Deborah?
I'll respond since I worked with the committee, if that's okay, Michelle? So we've worked over the past years, we being Kristin Garcia and the LTAC Committee, to formulate criteria to try to make this as fair as possible between all the different events, because all of them are valued. And so what we have tried to do strongly is to really keep to the data, and we have a hotelier that, she's one of the main entities on the committee, so we listen to her greatly, and it's very important to her that the events bring what they call heads and beds. And then we're always saying, yeah, but, with the other events. So if you'll look at this rating system, so the Fly-In was 95, Arlington Hometown Holidays was 95, and I think, and there was a 94, which is a street fair, and DABA's Hometown Holidays, just as an example. So what we did, and first, we started out with anybody that scored less than 50 got dropped, so that was two. And then we went through and asked more questions about each of the events with the information we had. And to be honest, the smaller ones, we really wanted to be able to fairly fund, again, trying to stay true to criteria. But one of our criteria that we've just set in the last couple of years is what events are bringing in new events to their event, or are growing to try to reach out to more? I'm thinking of the Hispanic event is one of them, is a new event, plus this coming year, they were expanding the things they were doing. So that was something that's very important to us in trying to give them like as much funding as possible with the numbers. And then, so when it came down to those ones in the 90s, we had pretty much felt like with the percentages, because believe me, working with Kristin, no, we got it, we figure out the percentage of all of our scores, so each of us on the committee have a score. And this time was very nice because we were all really within a few points of each other. There were no discrepancies, so she didn't have to throw out a high and a low. And so that's how we got the scoring, and then to dole out, and also what we've done to try to help using the criteria to not give everything to this certain big event that you mentioned, is the more that events have like admission fees and sponsorships to provide the money they need, the less money LTAC will provide. Does that make sense?
Are you asking me specifically? I'm aware of how we rank everybody and the ratings. I was there when we converted to that, so I understand how it works. It doesn't change how I see that amount of money towards one organization, and it can be questionable as how many people go to the Arlington Fly-In and actually stay in the city and spend money in the city versus some of these other events that are held in downtown, where...
We have the data. I'm sorry, we have the data.
That's fine. I've never seen the data, and I've been on the airport commission for a couple of years, and they were asking for it in regards to that event, and it was never provided. So the data has not been shared publicly that I'm aware of, or else I would not be speaking right now. So I think that, you mentioned Hispanic, that organization, it brings people into the city. And for me, I don't feel like the Fly-In actually brings people into the city. You go to the airport and you go home, and I see it because I live pretty close to it. So you don't, we don't need to explain how we got there because I understand that, but that's how I see it, and I just don't think it benefits the city itself in revenue to the amount that we're giving them, 23% of all the funds, when there's other local downtown Arlington places that could benefit.
Any other questions? Come on.
Taking advantage of Deborah's here, I guess, too, wanting to ask, or is that okay? Can I keep asking clarification, too? Farm tours and farmers market, I mean, being Arlington and being so proud and fighting so hard for our farmlands, and maybe just a little biased about my background in conservation, it does throw me a little bit off that the funding wasn't as strong to help support those organizations that are here and those businesses that we pride ourselves as a city that we do want to support and promote, and we have fought and really hard to keep and make sure that Arlington has that presence. And I also echo the, some of these organizations that have been doing these events for so many years, still getting this funding and such a large percentage of the funding, when they are getting sponsorships and admin fees and so many other funding sources that we could have helped support and could have helped bring in more of the events that would help show people who we are, that brings them back into town more and more and more and more.
Into the city.
Yep, into the city. And even Smokey Point, right? Because we want to make sure we're supporting the Smokey Point businesses.
Absolutely.
That's the city. If I may respond, if that's okay, is, these are the words of the hotelier, who is a key member on our LTAC Committee. We would not have those funds if people did not spend the night in that hotel, in the hotels, period. So I'm former DABA president. I fight for the non, the events that don't really feed heads and beds, because I see the value of them. I'm not disagreeing with you. But if you want the number of heads and beds that are there for the Fly-In, they have it. She told us what it is, and we asked what, like, the Glen Eagle event, because they have some bands and stuff to come. She can tell us how many people actually stay. She tells us what events work with her to book heads and beds, like forming packages and stuff. And some of, what we've been trying to train the people applying for events, is they can't just list, oh, we tell people about Best Western and Quality Inn or whatever all our hotels are. They need to go in and actually work out packages, and then that hotel will save blocks for the people. So they have the data. So Rachel, the hotelier, has that information, and over the years, we've been collecting it and trying to strengthen how we change this, the criteria for this process. So I understand the value of all the events, and I understand that some that are small may seem of greater value than some that have been funded for many years. I... I, I understand this. But I also know we wouldn't have the money if we didn't have the events that have the people spend the night. And so the farm tour one, we talked about that, and it attracts people, but there are very few that actually spend the night. So that's where we get the struggle, and it's a struggle every year.
The golf course one, right? I mean, I know that, that can blow up to something big, and people are going to want to come out, and we have a nice golf course, so.
Great location.
You know, again, that funding.
We, we really try to keep it as fair as possible by the criteria. It's not emotional, believe me, with dealing with Kristin. It is criteria-based, so.
Michelle?
So I did meet with Kristin and talk to her about this process. I also saw an application for this that, and said it, there was anticipation that 300 people, and when I think people, I'm thinking tourists that are coming to spend their money in Arlington, would be staying in Arlington. But actually, there's only 197 hotel rooms in Arlington, if you, Best Western and the Medallion. So that just makes me, that makes me a little concerned that we're, and this isn't personal for you, Deborah, this is, I mean, so don't take it that way.
I hear you, and we catch those things, and we chuckle.
But I'm doing more than chuckling. I'm saying that there is not a place for 300 people, 300 people to come to Arlington and stay in our hotels, the Best Western or the Medallion. And I called the hotels, and they do a block of rooms. However, those are typically for the people that are working out the event, and I don't know if they're vendors or what they're called, they have their own businesses, and they stay there. So it really made me question how many people, like, is my sister coming from Polesbo seeing it, staying in a hotel room? Or is it the vendors and people that work there? So I'm, I don't support this version, and that's all I'm going to say. I think I've done my research on it. Done quite a bit of research on it and talked with many people, directors and others. And I'm done. I almost called her.
One more question, sorry. One more question. Do we get any, we don't get any funding when they stay at the, like, would they RV in, right? There's no funding in LTAC?
No.
There's no fees for that? Like, when they RV in and they camp?
No.
It's all profit, too, right? For the event, not necessarily any percentage of that coming back to LTAC?
None of that comes to LTAC.
Yeah. And there's a lot of camping.
Yeah.
No other questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, just a second. I move to approve the 2026 funding distribution as recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Oppose?
Nay.
Aye.
Roll call vote on that, please?
Just going to suggest a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Rob Toyer?
Nay.
Excuse me?
Nay.
Deborah Nelson?
Yes.
Michelle Blythe?
No.
Leisha Noback?
No.
Yvonne Giardot van Orne?
No.
Jan Schwedee?
Yes.
Heather Logan?
She said yes.
She said yes.
Four to three is what I heard? Okay. Four no, three yes? Okay.
Can I have a question, just to clarify?
Already voted?
No, it's not about that. It's about the people on this committee that serve on nonprofits, because they're the ones that are going to have to look back at this and, and hear from council what exactly they want. Because I can tell you the two-hour process it took for us to discuss all of this. And, and Sherry will do a fine job if that's who's going to work with the committee on it. But I would like it, just other than it's too much for the Fly-In, they're going to really, especially Rachel, the hotelier, is going to need some really clear understanding of the legality of what they just asked, the council just asked for. Because it's not favoritism, it's really about, how do they want the scoring system changed? Because that's, that's the concern, is the communication to the committee that really committed their time, the volunteers, of what they, what the council expects them to do, to change the vote. How are, how are they going to manipulate the criteria to appease the council for this one event, is my question.
It's not about one event.
Can I, can I say something? It's not our job to tell the advisory committee on what to do. They can watch this meeting and hear what the concerns were, but it's from what Oscar said, we're not permitted to come and tell you, or tell the group how to divide the money up. So I guess they can, I mean, is that what you said?
I think one of the options for the council is to simply send it back to the LTAC.
Exactly.
You could propose something different, or you could just send it back to the LTAC. I think, I think those are both available options to the council.
Do, do a motion for, oh, Heather's got a comment or question.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Manny. My question is mostly for Oscar. If the council and LTAC cannot resolve this, is there a possibility that no one would get any funding?
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be an option. There, there has to be some sort of consensus at some point for this to move forward. And I think sending it back to the LTAC and seeing if we can get something that's more acceptable to the council would be a good way to, to start. But it would be an ongoing process. There's no, like, simple dispute resolution process for this. And so I, I, I think it's a, just a process of trying to work it out over time, and hopefully that gets done.
Okay, I think if we were to do a motion to cover something like that, would be acceptable?
I don't believe you need a motion. You need a motion.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's going back to the-
Okay.
LTAC Committee.
Perfect. Okay, and we'll move on to our third item, the interlocal agreement with Arlington School District Number 16 for the school resource officer. And again, it looks like it's Paul.
Thank you. You said, you said it all. I don't really need to say much more. This is our annual agreement, interlocal agreement with the school district for the school resource officer. That's an assignment here out of the police department. The school district pays 100% of our cost of that position for the 180 days of, of the school year, and then we pick up the rest of it. However, that person's rotated during holidays and, and summer break, that position is rotated back into, into the police department. So for all practical purposes, it, that person goes back out on patrol or wherever they're needed during those times. Nothing's changed in this agreement year to year. This is the same as what we've done for the last few years. There's been no changes. The only change is, is I, I just, the number on the cab for the total cost is what the total cost was for this year. That will change next year, so that you'll see a little bit of a change in the number, because like I said, we bill them for the exact amount. So, you know, COLA, cost of benefits and things, those changes do affect the dollar amount. School district realizes that. That's why there's no fixed dollar in the interlocal agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Deborah?
Just, well, you answered the question about holidays and stuff and summer vacation, but on Fridays, when it's like a half day every Friday, does that SRO then clock in here to, to work? I'm thinking of all the kids downtown and the pressure then that's here. So are they supposed to clock in, or do they clock in to work here during that?
Just because school is out, they're still required to put their, you know, 40 hours a week in.
Full day in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, having said that with the, you know, with the holidays and things like that, we do try to plan the SRO's vacation around that schedule, so we, we don't want them to take vacation time unless it's, you know, unavoidable during the school year, because that would force us to backfill it. Training, things like that, we try to get all of the annual training done on the days off from school, again, so we don't have to backfill that position. So that's not 100% that when they're not at the school, they're out on patrol, but, because there are other factors in there. But I think the short answer to your question is, is that yes, they, on, when early dismissal, the SRO should be working at the school or, you know, on patrol to some degree.
Thank you.
Any other question? Jen, did you have?
I was just, and I'm sure we've been told this before, so the one police officer divides his time up between all of the schools.
Yeah.
Okay. With the most time at the high school.
Probably, yeah.
Been there, done that. Thank you.
Any other questions? None seen? We have a motion?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement with the Arlington School District Number 16 for the school resource officer and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? None heard, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, well, any comments or reports from council members tonight? Jen?
Oh.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jen.
I just wanted to kind of give a heads up. Thursday, I'm down in Seattle at the Transportation Policy Board, and we've been working for four years on coming up with where we can get the revenue to pay for the transportation. Right now, we know we're 21% short. And there's a full list of things they're looking at, and I know you've all heard about the road usage, which I'm still not sure that's going to go, because just the way that, how do you keep everybody honest? But one of the interesting things that's on the list, and I'm anxious, and I'm going in person on Thursday, is they want to tax home deliveries. And with, of course, Amazon and our city, you know, that makes a big difference. Anyway, that is Thursday, and I will report out and send an email and let you know where we are.
Thank you. Michelle?
Well, that costs me a lot of money with home deliveries. Rob and I continued our tour, and last week, we did a ride along with NG, who does code enforcement for the city, and we just weren't sure how everything worked. And we were curious, because it's kind of broken up into two different departments. So we had a fabulous time. Rob tried to buy a house, and I tried to rescue six dogs. We had a, yeah, that sums it up. But it was a great learning experience going out with her, and we're going to go back out, because she was, she was very, very good at teaching, so it was fun.
Good, good. Any other comments? Yvonne?
I just want to give a shout out to everybody for 4th of July. I wasn't here, but I heard really good things about it, and I know it's just a lot, a lot of work. And so thank you to the chamber and the city for all their hard work, and everybody involved in keeping the city beautiful and nice and clean for everybody, but still fun, and so thank you.
No others? Paul, do you have anything for tonight?
I'll just mention, because it came up in public comment, was a question about Tweet Road, and just remind council, a couple of months ago, you approved a contract. We're actually doing some repairs up there before the end of the construction season on Tweet Road, realizing it is, it's in need of some work. I have not been up there recently, so I will go check on the vegetation control and see if there's something we need to address before the, before the construction.
Okay, great. Couple of things I got, also on Yvonne's note there. I'd like to personally thank all the MNO and all the different staffs that worked over the holiday weekend. They did a great job. I mean, I think after the parade, I think that's the cleanest I've seen, seen the city street in a long time. I mean, they, they even had volunteers from the church and some of the other groups that were running around picking up garbage to help MNO. But yeah, I'd like to thank all of those that helped do that and make the day a great, great day. My report, last week, I attended the AWC conference in Kennewick. During the conference, I had the privilege, I was invited to be a speaker on a panel about building a positive police culture, along with the Kennewick Police Chief and their union president with the police department. It was, it was very well taken. I mean, we, I came back out of there with some ideas from the Kennewick Police Department. The audience, they had a lot of good questions and asked how each one of the departments or how we were doing things, how Kennewick was doing. It was really good conversation. There's also through the conference, I attended several different sessions, I mean, which included infrastructure funding. I did find out that 2025 and the public works and, as well as the TIB, they have money still available for 2025 that we didn't know about, that we could go asking for now. Also, there was the roundtable for mayors where we can sit and just bounce different ideas and thoughts off each other, and they come out of there with a lot of different things and ideas, how different cities were taking care of different issues and how they handled different concerns. As well as, one I attended was the strategic planning for, for infrastructure, and that was very interesting and stuff. But yeah, I attended several others, but all the information taken was very good information. I was glad I went, and I think them things, I'd like to see maybe some council members one of these ones attend it, because the information is very valuable. But no, that was pretty much my week last week, and this weekend was busy with the 4th of July festivities. And that's all I have. Do we, nothing else if we want to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Or not?
Second.
We can stay here. Question? Oh, I can't do that.
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.